In which, in what order these are approved?
No, I think they can be approved in the order that you have them. That's typically how we approach it.
Okay, so that would be starting with ordinance twenty dash eleven to approve that one. That one begins on page twenty-four. And that would be the, like I said, ordinance twenty dash eleven. It would be the general obligation bond and grant anticipation notes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept ordinance number twenty dash eleven, Town of Emmitsburg, general obligation bond and grant anticipation notes?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash eleven, the Town of Emmitsburg, general obligation bond and grant anticipation notes.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been segmented by a swift, Mr. Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? And there are no nays? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, we move on?
So on page forty-three, you have ordinance twenty dash twelve, which is the Town of Emmitsburg, the general obligation bonds.
Okay, so for the purposes of phrasing this, we accept this obligation? Do we need to identify the series number at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a name for that series?
Just ordinance twenty dash twelve, the Town of Emmitsburg, general obligation bonds.
I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty dash twelve, Town of Emmitsburg, general obligation bonds.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion today by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Sure thing. And so Kathy, with the board's sort of indulgence, I will save time and resources. And if you don't need anything further, I would be happy to just sign off at the meeting.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Oh, yes, we will. Our work is just beginning. Well, yours has been going on for quite a while, putting all this together for this project. And we look forward to working with all of you. I am a resource. If you have any questions, you know, that may come up later, just feel free to route those through Kathy, and it's a privilege to work with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kimberly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows where we are with the pump station, RKNK began design. They estimated six months for design. That should be about January or February. Once they're finished with their design, then that will be sent to USDA for approval through their engineer. And once we receive approval on the design, then the project will, with RKNK's assistance, go out to bid for construction. Our hope is to break ground by summer of next year. That's just kind of a quick update on the pump station.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anything else related to this that we need to address at this time, or are we able to now move on?
We can move on.
Okay, very good. So. Trying to get to my right spot?
All right.
Can we go to, sorry? Gosh. Not page fifty-five, sorry?
Page sixty-two.
Page sixty-two, Mr. President.
Thank you. That is appreciated. Page sixty-two, agenda item number four, hold wastewater treatment plant annexation public hearing and adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty-one eleven R, annexation of wastewater treatment plant for consideration. Okay, so at this time, do we need to open the public hearing? Is that correct?
Correct. So you'd start with number one.
Okay, so at this time, you're calling, the Board of Commissioners' public hearing procedure, we call upon, we are calling the hearing. The meeting to consider the annexation of one-six-seven-zero-seven and one-six-seven-one-five, Creamery Road, has now started. We now turn to staff for their presentation.
I'll turn that over to Zach.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna read a brief timeline for the record. Won't take too long here. So September eighth, twenty-twenty, at the Board of Commissioners' meeting, staff introduced the wastewater treatment plant annexation resolution. The board adopted the annexation plan and also scheduled tonight's public hearing. On September ninth, staff published notice of proposed annexation and time and place of the public hearing of resolution in the Frederick News Post on September eleventh, eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and October second. A copy of the public notice, resolution, plat, and annexation plan was provided to the Frederick County Planning Department, Frederick County Executive and Council, Maryland Department of Planning, and also Metropolitan Washington County. Tonight's meeting, November second, twenty-twenty, this next step is to adopt the annexation resolution. If adopted tonight, there is a forty-five day mandatory waiting period. Assuming no referendum is received, the resolution will be active on December seventeenth. Town staff will then forward the resolution and map of the new town boundary to the Frederick County Clerk of Courts, and then the Maryland Department of Legislative Services. After that, the annexation is then completed. That is my presentation, and we can move on to the next section, please.
Okay, so Ms. Willetts, I'm just kind of relying on you on the drive here.
Mr. President, she stepped out for a moment. She went to the bathroom.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Do you have the form in front of you, Tim?
Okay, clarify form regarding the, the public?
Procedures.
Procedures, I do, yes.
Okay.
So. Are there questions from the town staff? Sorry, pardon me. Are there questions from the commissioners related to this? Are there any questions at this time?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay.
I have none also.
I'm good. Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we now turn to public comment. According to state law, the county and any regional, and any regional or state planning agencies with jurisdiction in the county has the right to be heard first before the public at the hearing on the proposed annexation. Are there any representatives from these agencies present that wish to provide comment on this matter?
Do we have any public comment, Matty?
So we have none from any public organizations. Now we turn to public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter?
No, we do not have anybody.
Thank you, okay. If no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. We now turn to deliberation. Okay, so at this time, is there any discussion related to this item? Any board members have any positions or thoughts related to this they feel the need to share? And then questions? Hearing none, we move forward. Okay, so is there a motion to end the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to end the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Ritz. It was segmented by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so Ms. Willetts, for clarification, related to the annexation, so phrasing it is accepting the motion to, sorry, creating a motion to annex one-six-seven-zero-seven, one-six-seven-zero-seven-one-five, Creamery Road? Would that be the appropriate way to phrase that? That seems a little coarse.
One second, the vote has to be taken to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor of closing the meeting, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Okay, now we move forward.
And to answer your question, Mr. President, it would be the motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash eleven R.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's on page sixty-two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we turn to that resolution. Is there a motion to accept resolution number twenty-twenty dash eleven R?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty dash eleven R, which is the approval of the annexation of parcels oh-five dash one-five-nine-zero-four-zero and oh-five dash one-seven-eight-two-three-one as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been segmented by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? No nays? The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. We move forward. Okay. We now turn to agenda item number five.
So I know that our, our special workshop related to the salary compensation analysis got postponed or canceled, excuse me, because of the incident in town that night. So I didn't know what, if anything, the board wanted to discuss. I can tell you with working with the mayor on this that our recommendation was basically the salaries as they related to the ERI market. And basically what that does is, I have a chart here, basically comes up, shows a difference of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-sixty-three, one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars spread out over the various departments from Fund One, Fund Four, and Fund Five. It affects the positions of the town manager, the director of public works, the water and sewer superintendent, the town planner, the town accountant, your lead op, or your lead operator for water and sewer, your town clerk, your two water and sewer operators, and your two public works employees. If you remember, Mr. Benner, he did his research based off the BLS and the ERI data, and he strongly recommended the ERI data. It was more, it fit more with the job descriptions that we currently have in town. We would have two job description name changes so that fit, better fit the job descriptions that we currently have in, in place. And one would be for our public works employees. It would be the suggested title change to maintenance technician. Because if you think about what they do, they do more than just water and sewer, water line repairs. They're public works. They do such a great variety of things. It was more encompass what they did. And then based off our job description for our office manager, it was a suggested title change to an administrative coordinator that fit, fit more of the duties of that position as well. And talking with the mayor, and anytime he wants to jump in, that if this was approved, we would need to, we would recommend also a salary chart change. If you recall, Mr. Benner discussed using minimums, midpoints, and maximums. And this would allow us to keep our salaries more competitive over the years as opposed to a grade and step change where you're only looking at small percentage changes. And that's, I believe, where we lost our competitive nature, or our competitiveness. As people progress through the salary chart, the percentage decreased, that they lost, lost that competitive edge. So we were looking at also changing our salary chart to that. I know one of the questions, I believe, from one of the board members was, and I just base this is off of, if, if the board would go with the recommendations and the hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollar shortfall would be rolled out at twenty-five percent and catch up over the next course of next two years, could we do a fifty percent rollout now and the fifty percent next fiscal year? So not knowing the direction that the board wanted to go in, I just based off of fifty percent now and fifty percent next fiscal year. And so if you look at Fund One shortfall, that was roughly about sixty-five thousand dollars. And then your Fund Four shortfall was sixty-one thousand, roughly sixty-one thousand. For Fund Four and Five, there's two options based off of discussions with staff. I know we approved in the budget the addition, or an additional water and sewer position. We would forego that position. I don't think that it is a necessary step that we need to take at this time. I think it would be something we would need to revisit over the next several years. And that, I'm trying to find my notes, that, that difference was about fifty-five thousand dollars, if I recall. I'm trying to find my notes. And then we are also going to be receiving from, and Zach, can you jump in on this one? From the logging, the amount that we were anticipating for the logging would, it goes directly to the water fund. Zach, do you know that amount?
Oh, thirty-some thousand. I think it's thirty-six thousand.
All right, I just found it. So we'll be receiving thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty at the end of November for the logging. We have allocated forty-five hundred to the trail fund, which leaves a remaining of twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty that will go directly to the water fund. So we believe we could, in Fund Four and Five, absorb the extra cost of these positions without any undue burden to the budget. For Fund Four, or, excuse me, Fund One, you're looking at, over the course of one year, is sixty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty. If you divide that over, you know, fifty-fifty, you're looking at about thirty-two thousand, five hundred. We just got done with our auditors, and right now we have an estimated general fund excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty. So again, we believe that we can implement this without any undue burden to our budget. That's, that's just kind of the information that we've been working on since our last meeting.
So when will, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, can I speak?
Yes, absolutely, please.
Um, are these, when, when we get this, if this reaches through to this, this evening, when will the changes go into effect?
So this evening, I would, what I would need is direction of what, where you want the, what you want us to pursue. If you, if it is the ERI data, I would work with Mr. Tabler. We would need to come up with a new salary chart that would have to be presented by ordinance to the board, and that's how this would get approved. So we could bring it back to the board in December. And then I would expect, if it's approved in December, we could implement it beginning in January, whether it's at a hundred percent in January, or if it's fifty percent in January, and then fifty percent in June. I'm just looking for, and the mayor's looking for, direction from the board on how you want us to proceed.
If, if I could, Mr. President, I just, it's, over the last couple of years, we found out a very, very tight labor market, and especially during these times, we have a very special, experienced crew, and we have a good team that's working together, and, and all our positions seem to have gentrified into different things, like our planner and town clerk are now involved, as, as is our town manager, always in grant writing, and we've been very successful there, and there are new challenges out there all the time in the field. And we have a very experienced staff, and these slots are hard to, to fit and fill. So I would, I'd recommend at least a fifty percent, if, if not a hundred percent, funding for, starting in January. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board at this time, or comments? Okay.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Just remind me again, I apologize, the, the, he, what, what column are we looking at? The, the large, the large spreadsheet on the legal size sheet, I believe it is, that was for the October nineteenth meeting. The rec, the, the recommended new salary is where, what column?
I'm, I'm trying to look here.
It's the ERI.
ERI.
Well, there's, there are a few ERIs, so I was getting a little confused there.
Right, so I'm trying to look on which chart I pulled the numbers from.
Ms. Willetts, I'm afraid I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I put myself on mute.
Oh, okay.
It should be the one beside current salary.
Which chart? I'm trying to figure out which chart, because I have a different chart I was working on.
Page one, two, or three on the large graphic.
I'm sorry?
Page one, two, or three on the large document?
Let me see. I'm not sure I see that page, but I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm not sure which one you're looking at. It says comparisons of current employee salaries and market rates.
Yes, right, he's correct. So the chart that's entitled Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, Comparison of Current Employee Salaries and Market Salaries, you'll see job title in column one, grade in column two, employee in column three, current salary, column four, and then the ERI market salary in column five.
So that's, that's the column we're, we're looking at then, too?
Correct, that would be that, the, the recommendation.
And I, I guess one concern that I have regarding that column, and I know that a lot of effort went into our, our consultant regarding this, it appears that one, two, two, it appears that two staff members would have a salary reduction?
No, we would not be rec, and there's actually one, two, three, four, we would not be offer, suggesting salary reduction at all. All that shows is that we were able to offer them the competitive rate, or the competitive salary. So absolutely not, we would not recommend a reduction.
Would that be detrimental to them in any way come employee performance evaluation time?
No, absolutely not. It'll just be, it'll allow us to plug them in with the salary chart, with the minimum midpoint maximum of where they are. And no, it would not have any impact on their performance evaluations.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the board? No. Just a clarification, are there any gaps in staffing at this time? Or anticipated retirements forthcoming? Like, anyone have paperwork in related to that, or any staff that has left staff, former staff who has just left?
No, we, I have no knowledge of anybody with retirement aspirations.
So we have a full complement right now, and we're not seeking to fill any positions or gaps or anything akin to that?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, so if I understand this correctly, the, the mayor has recommended either, sorry, looking at the salary chart comparison, the mayor has recommended that we utilize this, and the other piece would be how best to implement it into, into use.
Correct.
For example, fifty, fifty percent in the immediate future, and then another fifty percent the following fiscal year? Is that, is, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's fine.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, or your other suggestion was one hundred percent implementation with the next fiscal year? Was that the other option I understood?
That is correct, but I, I'd rather, I'd like the, maybe be balanced, more balanced at fifty percent.
The, the phase in, okay, all right. So the mayor asked that we go with the fifty, the fifty percent phase in? Should we adopt this modification? So putting it to the board, is there a motion to accept the recommended pay change for staff? And this could be a discussion before we actually move to motion? Or does anybody want to propose that modification as, as it sits?
I'd make a motion, we accept the new pay rates with an implementation period of fifty percent starting January one, and follow up with the second fifty percent July.
Second.
Okay, very good. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Okay, all right. All in favor of the, sorry, the motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. It's been segmented by Commissioner Ritz. My apologies. Is there any further discussion now? No. I'll offer this, thank you guys for your patience. I am rusty. Forgive me. Moving forward, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, aye?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero? Thank you. Okay, we now move forward to setting the agenda for the next town meeting.
Yes, I have several items for the December agenda. For administrative business, I have free holiday metered parking for consideration. For the consent agenda, I don't have a name as, as of yet, but we will have an appointment as an alternate to the Board of Appeals for consideration. We will have a name for you by the time the packet comes out. And then moving on to the agenda, number one would be forward the proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-one, which is the subdivision amendment for parks, rec, open space requirements to the Planning Commission for review and comment, and set public hearing for January fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Number two would be the community development block grant public hearing for the purpose of seeking public input on, and there's five different categories that we'll be seeking public input on. The first one is local community development, second is economic development, third is housing needs, four is the proposed CBD, CB, oh my goodness, CDBG, excuse me, project activity, and that's to replace the hundred-and-seventeen curb ramps for ADA compliance. And number five would be other community needs as needed. Number three, the approval of resolution twenty dash oh-three R, community development block grant submittal authorization for consideration. Number four, approval of the bid for a new water and sewer truck for consideration. And number five would be the ordinance related to the salary chart for consideration. And
Okay, any?
Just, just to give everyone the heads up, there may be a need for a closed session, thank you, on November ninth to provide updates related to the previous, previous closed meeting, the East Emmitsburg Industrial Park, as well as some communications that the town has received from MDE. I will know fur, later this week, once I speak to Leslie.
Okay, what was the date for that, please?
November ninth.
Thank you. Okay, do you need a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ritz.
I was wondering if I can add an item for next month's agenda for consideration. I foresee it lasting very long.
Okay.
I would like to add for consideration, um, potential discounted, um, refund on the next quarter's water bills due to the, um, chemical nature of the water the past few months. We can further discuss at the next meeting.
Sure, so this is a discussion item, sir?
Uh, discussion and then for consideration.
Okay.
I mean, if, if it's for consideration, I think staff will need some more information to be prepared for it.
Yes.
Absolutely, I can, I can provide you more information.
So, Mr. Ritz, you still want to keep it for December, or do you want to move that to January, sir?
When do the quarterly water bills, um, I, I'm assuming that they go out in January for February, correct?
They'll go out, um, December thirtieth.
Then we would have to do this December.
Okay, all right.
And I don't want to make a special meeting in December, um, prior to Christmas.
Yeah, understood. So this would be agenda item number six?
Yes.
Okay, um, anybody else? Okay, um, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented with these six items?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sweet.
Commissioner Burns said he needs, uh, we need to have some more, um, consent. I need to have, uh, updates for the, uh, for the committee, that their terms have run out, for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Can I go on the consent agenda?
Yes.
I believe so. Uh, staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, sir.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, could miss, it'll be, um, Jennifer Joy. It'll be, Tricia and Will Shepherd. It will be, uh, Comrade Weaver. And it will be, uh, Mark Walker. They, they'll need to be, um, before the next Citizen Advisory meeting, I would, they'll need to be put back on. And I'll call, I talked to, to the ones who were at the meeting with, with Commissioner Burns and I, they, they said they would come back on the agenda, I mean, on to the committee. I have to call the remaining ones who weren't there yet. So I'll, I'll let you know if they're gonna be on there, but we can put them on there just in case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so with these modifications in mind, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented related to, uh, the regular agenda, the administrative items, and the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda for the December meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anybody against? No, okay, good. All right, uh, motion carries five to zero. Super quick item, uh, regarding the, uh, the, the salary item this evening, um, I hope staff, and, and I hope it's very apparent to staff, uh, the, the desire of the board, uh, to show gratitude for their service.
Yes, it is greatly appreciated, and, and it is duly noted that, um, you all have been very supportive since this topic was first brought up, um, back during budget planning and loss of one of our employees, so it, we, we greatly appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, well, I, I, more on our part, thank you guys very much, that's really what I'm trying to say. Okay, moving forward, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Did we get that?
Mr. Burns, are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome for that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Sweet. All in favor of closing the meeting, please say aye.
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 Uh, good evening, the meeting concludes at ten-ten on Monday, November second. Thank you all.